Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me this morning. Good morning. Can y'all hear me okay? I can hear you.
You want to try again Dakota?
The remix there.
I think we might have you. You'll try saying something, see if we can't pick you up. I don't think he can.
Debbie says they can't hear, they could see us, they can't hear us.
Well? Everything, can you hear us now Dakota?
Dakota's muted now.
Alright, try saying something, let's see if we can hear you.
Good morning, can y'all hear me okay?
Yep, alright, go ahead, let's have a vacation, we appreciate you being patient with us.
Alright, first I'd like to read from Psalm 23 and then we'll pray. Psalm 23 says, "The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He makes me lie down in grain pastures. He leads me beside quiet waters. He restores my soul. He guides me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I fear no evil, for you are with me. Your rod and your staff, they comfort me. You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You have anointed my head with oil, my cup overflows. Surely goodness and loving kindness will follow me all the days of my life. And I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Thank you for the opportunity this morning on behalf of Ottawa Bible Church. We thoroughly appreciate our Franklin County Commissioners. Let's bow in prayer. Father, I thank you so much for an opportunity to pray. Just to communicate with you, thank you for your great love for us, for the value you've placed on our life. Our value is not subjective, but our value is objective. Because you have declared our value and you've declared that you love us. Thank you for your word, thank you for our leaders that you have ordained, you sovereignly ordained. Thank you for this county, thank you for those who care for the people and lead the people in our community. Lord, we ask you for wisdom in this meeting and from that wisdom, we just ask you that the community would benefit. I pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Alright, thank you. Correspondence organizational business. Public comment?
We have none.
You can see everybody's dialing in. Consent agenda today will include meeting minutes. From the 10th of March, claim vouchers in the amount of $543,006.39 and tax change orders in the amount of $560.86. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I was going to say, this is Commissioner Dickinson, I don't have to do that anymore, I will second it.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Dunn? Chair Weymer?
Yes.
Alright, our first item of business is to consider awarding a bid for the remainder of the courthouse. Brandon Sands, our maintenance director should be on.
Yeah, good morning, can y'all hear me okay?
Sure can.
Good. Okay, um, yeah, so as you, uh, as you all may remember, uh, last year, um, about this time, um, we started the phase one of, uh, painting the courthouse. Um, that was everything from the roof line down, all the windows and everything. Uh, this is for the remainder of that project, um, everything above the roof line, there's, um, uh, some decorative, uh, tram, um, along the peak of the roof and that includes the, uh, the two towers on the building as well. Um, and the steps, um, leading up to the first floor on both sides of the building. Um, the amount for this, uh, the remainder of this work is, uh, $32,752. Um, that bid comes from, uh, Heron Companies, they're the ones that did, uh, the first phase of this work. Um, so just seeking your approval to, uh, move forward with Heron Company to finish out this, uh, this project.
So we've looked at everything up to, what is it, the third story, this will be the, the high stuff, the roof line and above?
That's correct.
Alright. Way less than we initially, uh, the two combined still way less than we initially anticipated expending for this project, so that's good news, that looks great what's been done so far. Any questions for Brandon?
Uh, Brandon is right, is there a timeframe on this, uh, project?
Um, yeah, they haven't given me, um, a timeframe on, uh, how long it's going to take them, but they're planning to start this probably mid-summer, they want to make sure the ground has plenty of time to dry out, um, from the spring before they bring this big lift on the lawn. Okay.
This does say that the bid's only good for 30 days, does that make a difference then? You just have to accept it within 30 days?
Um, that's correct, in fact, they've got a technical bid, um, uh, anticipating an approval if, you know, if something changes and, uh, that'll, that thing might change, but as long as we move forward with the approval, then they're, they're prepared to, uh, hold this bid, um, at this price, um, for when they start in the summer.
And this also includes the steps, was that something that we had, or initially were going to do ourselves, or?
Well, um, so, what happened there, um, we were looking into potentially trying to do those ourselves, um, and get those repainted. Um, I think that, uh, the expertise of, uh, these professional painters is going to, they're going to be able to put this down and, uh, and ensure that the, uh, the paint holds up a lot longer and, and better than if we were to do it ourselves, I think. Um, especially as much traffic as those steps see. Uh, oh, last year, um, just before winter when we had the railing, um, redone on those steps, uh, that required some, some grinding and some welding and, uh, when that was done and the company that did that, they worked on it weekend and the very next day we got snow and so we created a bunch of those rough spots we're seeing going on. Uh, so we're trying to clean that up.
The, the board may recall that, um, this is the company, they, they'd already given us a great bid, but then when they got their payroll protection loans, um, they tried to pass that savings on to us, so they were able to come down even more, so Cole acknowledged that, but certainly we're really happy with the price. This is substantially lower than we thought we'd get, so.
Were there any other questions? An affirmative motion would be to award the bid to, uh, paint the historic courthouse to Heron Companies in the amount of $32,752.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
Hey Cole, hey Brandon, would you stay on the call and give a staff report? Just to update the board on where we're at with district court HVAC?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Alright, our second item is to, we have a resignation for the County Planning Commission, Larry Walrod, our planning and zoning directors on.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Sure can, go ahead.
We have, uh, received, uh, a, a letter from, uh, Don Barclay, who is a member of the, uh, the Department of County Planning Commission, uh, who reported and, uh, a few years ago, he has, uh, indicated that he would, uh, has taken on more business and, and new business and therefore he's not going to be available really to spend the time that he needs to, uh, to be an effective planning commission member and he's submitted his resignation and we would ask that you accept that resignation. Uh, I think that we do have, uh, an opportunity here to go ahead and, uh, get another representative from the same general area, I've talked to a couple of people. But before we do that, we, of course, we'll open it for, uh, other parties, uh, that would, uh, maybe be interested in becoming a, um, member of the, uh, the planning commission. But anyway, uh, the action that we're asking for you today would be a affirmative, uh, motion to, uh, support the item by, uh, accepting the resignation of Don Barclay from the, uh, planning, the President of County Planning Commission. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
I have one question, what part of the county is he from?
He's from Pomona.
Okay.
We have to vote to accept a resignation, right? Alright.
This is, uh, yeah, I won't make a motion to accept the resignation of Don Barclay from the Franklin County Planning Commission?
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris? Chair Weymer?
Yes. I think that's it for you today Larry, as far as items of business.
I'd like to ask Larry a question. Larry, still on there Larry? Larry, jump off? Can you hear us Larry?
Hello?
Yep, go ahead. Still Larry? Can you hear me Larry?
Yeah, now I can hear you.
Hey, uh, I'm going to bring it up to the board. Uh, I know in the past, you have, uh, ventured into looking at a codes court for your department to, to have a, a, uh, a way that function a little smoother and faster. And I know you had some projects out there that's been around for several years and I know you've, uh, worked and beat your head against the wall for a long time. Trying to get it to a point to take care of it and you just can't get it there. And I know years ago, uh, we looked into this, uh, and I feel like maybe you need to look into it again. Uh, I think you need some help in that area to, with the way the courts are basically in the last year. I can see things be used before anything ever gets done on what we want to take care of. Uh, and I know you've got a couple of them out there, been going on for several years trying to get something done to it. And what is your opinion about giving us a, a workup and a fresh session when you can? Of what, what you've done, I know a lot of the small towns are uneven now. Are working with other entities to help them with a codes court, I know. Uh, Richmond and Princeton now, some I don't know in detail somehow they're working through the city of Ottawa to do their codes court. And I don't know anyone, in the past even talked to Judge Kimball and he was even willing to help with a codes court if needed, so maybe we could go down that alley somehow without a lot of big dollars and, I mean, if the small towns are doing it, it can't be a big dollar amount if we can kind of follow that line. Not put it in our own system if we can work with somebody else's system and maybe coordinate with them and even help support theirs a little to continue there, yet advance ours too, so. Do you have any feelings on this here?
I, uh, have been discussing the same issue with Derek and, uh, I think we have reached, uh, a conclusion here that, uh, there are a couple of steps that we would need to take, uh, we need, and, uh, we'll be presenting something to the, uh, the board of County Commissioners, I think, I think, uh, in short order. Uh, I know that, uh, I've been working with, uh, Miami County, uh, they have, uh, uh, I think a fairly effective, uh, codes court over there. And, uh, because of that, I think, uh, we can probably, uh, use their, uh, their experience with this and, uh, we will be presenting something to the, uh, County Commission, uh, I think in a fair and short order regarding the codes court.
Yeah, and, and Don, I can chime in there, I have asked Larry to prepare me a step-by-step procedure of what Franklin County would need to do in order to set up a codes court. He is going to base that off of what Miami County's done. I don't think it, it's necessarily going to be a, a high-dollar deal, I think where your money's potentially going to come in is having to pay a judge to preside over the codes court, but it's something that even at that, it doesn't have to be a huge expense because a codes court wouldn't have to convene super often in order to take care of some of this, so. What I think we would like to do is become intimately familiar with what Miami County's done because they do have success over there. Um, and then kind of prepare our own recommended procedure, bring that to the five of you so then we can discuss the pros and cons of a codes court because certainly, uh, you know, when, I don't get calls super often from landowners, but I have gotten one recently who's very frustrated, absolutely understand the frustration, absolutely wish we had a mechanism to take care of this because as you said, even before COVID, you get this into district court, this is pre-COVID, you're probably looking at 12 to 18 months with the backlog that COVID has created, I bet you're looking at a couple of years before you got any real resolution. Just because courts are full of criminal cases, they're full of domestic cases and so sadly zoning cases don't always reach the top of the docket and so that is what a codes court would help us with and, and we'll continue to work Larry and I and we'll try to have that in front of you as soon as we responsibly can.
Thank you, thank you Larry.
Sounds like there's something to shoot there to, to be looking forward to and down the line to our third item of business, which is to consider a proposal from Cook Flat Strobel for the, the design and survey of a bridge on Osborne Terrace. Dave Lee, our public works director, are you on?
Yes sir, good morning, can you hear me just fine?
Yes, can.
Excellent, okay, so, uh, a few weeks ago, we were notified by the Kansas Department of Transportation that we were selected, uh, to replace this bridge on Osborne Terrace. It is a, uh, bridge that we submitted for several years in the road to their off-system bridge program. Um, and due to KDOT, um, adding CAREZAC money to their local, uh, or their off-system bridge program, they were able to select a few more bridges to, uh, uh, construct during the fiscal year 2022 budget year. And so, um, the issue with this is, it's a great situation that we're in and, and we're going to get to replace this bridge, but, um, we have lost approximately six months. Had we been selected in the, in the original, um, allocation of bridge funds, uh, we would, we would have already been underway with the survey engineering and right-of-way acquisition and utility relocate and, and those sorts of things. But due to the fact that, um, uh, they just added this money and created this, uh, this opportunity for us, we have lost approximately six months of a 24-month, uh, schedule. And so it's imperative that we move forward quickly. Uh, I have visited with, uh, CFS engineers and they are ready to, uh, begin this project. In fact, uh, truth be told, I, I think they've already, uh, done some initial work. Uh, but we would like to, uh, hire CFS to do the design and, and survey for this project. Uh, they're estimated at $78,400. The total project cost is just under 1.2 million, uh, that's a preliminary estimate based on lots of different factors. As they get into the design and, uh, uh, really get into the details, that number will continue to be, uh, revised and, and honed in on the actual number. But our match according to the current estimate is, uh, $238,000. And so the county is response entirely responsible for the preliminary engineering and any right-of-way acquisition costs. We have that money set aside, uh, we have been saving that for quite some time in, in hopes that this project will come along, so that we are ready to go. Uh, we just ask for your, uh, your approval of the, uh, proposal from CFS engineers so that they can, uh, get, get started on this project.
Any questions for David? Pretty straightforward, David did excellent job of recapping it. Um, an affirmative motion would be to approve proposal from CFS engineers for the survey design of Bridge 16-6 by 12-1 on Osborne Terrace in the amount of $78,400.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, our CNF engineers for this project.
Give us a second.
Commissioner Harris, second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes. Our fourth item of business is to consider adding Marshall Road from Montana to I-35 to the 2020 Hot Mix Asphalt Overlay Project. Go ahead David.
Yes Commissioner. So, in preparation for, well, during the, uh, the retreat, we discussed the, um, the 2020 Hot Mix Asphalt Project and where that was at. Uh, part of the discussion centered on whether or not it would be a good idea to add Marshall Road to that, uh, list. Uh, that would be for Montana Road to the I-35 right-of-way. Um, and then doing a little bit of, uh, research, um, that is a, an appropriate use of funds, uh, that road is in, um, uh, in a condition that, you know, an overlay would be, um, advisable. Uh, I have reached out to Kilo and they have provided a, uh, estimate for that, um, of $95,877. My original estimate, estimate for this, when I spoke with you at the retreat, was in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood of $8,000. Um, however, whenever Kilo looked at it and, and I agree with him, there's a section of that road about 1,500 feet that needs a, uh, a leveling course before we do the overlay. Um, and that adds the additional cost to the project. Uh, but I do think that this is, uh, this project is warranted. Um, and I would recommend moving forward with that. Uh, the $95,877 for the estimates, uh, we have in our budget, with the, uh, where we get the, the chip seal funds from. And so there is money available without, uh, dipping in any other line items or, um, any other pockets of money to pay for that work. And, uh, again, this work will be completed early in the year, uh, as soon as Kilo Construction, uh, fires up their asphalt plan. So, um, I would recommend and ask for you to approve, um, moving forward with this $95,877 to overlay, uh, Marshall Road from Montana to I-35. I will also say that I've been in touch with KDOT about, uh, joining this project. The area, the portion of Marshall Road that, uh, lies within there, within the I-35 right-of-way, uh, is, really needs some attention as well and KDOT recognizes that they are in the process of, uh, trying to find, um, uh, dollars to be able to join this project so that, uh, uh, once we're done, we have, uh, a good road surface all the way through there to the, uh, uh, be the east side of, uh, of that highway right-of-way.
So we're not responsible for the road under the, under the bridge?
We are not, no sir. No, I'm not going to tell you that we don't occasionally put some patch down to help that surface, uh, but we do that. Uh, we kind of work with KDOT, um, on a regular basis, uh, you know, those, those areas that kind of uh, butt one another's right-of-way, we will help each other out from time to time, but, uh, ultimately, we, we are not responsible for the road within their right-of-way.
You going to try and stripe this when, uh, we do the chip seal project, or?
Yes, I've got a call into the, um, striping contractor and when I'm back next week, I will visit with him about, um, adding that to their, uh, work on the, on the chip seal project. Uh, that definitely, definitely needs to be striped, uh, as soon as, you know, as soon as possible after the asphalt work is done uh, because of the, uh, you know, the nature of that road and the, uh, the various hills and whatnot that, that flow along there. So that'll probably be something else that, uh, will be before you in the coming weeks.
What else do you have to get done that didn't get done last year, is that bridge over I-35, is that done now?
The bridge over I-35 is, uh, that is complete. Uh, I'm still negotiating with KDOT on some striping, uh, for that bridge, for the bridge deck itself, but the bridge is, uh, open and, and, uh, is, uh, a nice addition, that, the bridge that was there had holes in the deck and, and had been a problem for quite some time, but that road is open. Uh, the remaining work that Kilo has to do for us, they, um, are going to overlay uh, Lebed Road from the city limits, which is Lebed and 23rd are essentially the same road, so from the city limits to, um, uh, the new alignment of, of Lebed Road tying into the Montana Road Bridge, that little section of road needs to be overlaid. Uh, Montana Road from the end of the new bridge on, over I-35 to Marshall Road, uh, will need to be overlaid, uh, as well. Uh, the approach at, on Lebed Road into Eisenhower Road needs to be, uh, where we're uh, going to smooth that out a little bit. And then there is some additional patching that, uh, they didn't complete last year that is going to be, uh, included as well, so. Uh, there's, I don't know, the dollar amount is, is significant. Uh, there's a few hundred thousand dollars left in their original, um, uh, project to cover this work, uh, but the magnitude, the way they've got it is relatively, uh, small. But there is, uh, and we've, we've been in communication with Kilo already and, uh, a couple of different times and we've got another one scheduled here coming up to, uh, uh, just to make sure that, you know, uh, we're all on the same page, uh, with what is remaining and, and timeline, so. Uh, I feel good about where we're at and adding Marshall Road will, um, be a positive improvement for that area and, uh, I'm sure that the And I'm sure the folks that travel through there will be very appreciative of the improvements.
Would anyone like to make a motion to award the proposal for Marshall Road, adding Marshall Road to, from Montana to I-35 right-of-way to the 2020 Hot Mix Asphalt Overlay Project, previously awarded to Kilo Construction the amount of $95,877?
I'll make that my second.
I'll second it. Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Wainwright?
Fifth item of business is to consider spring cleanup days for the dump. David?
Yes, Commissioner. So each year, well, in 2020, due to COVID and the unknowns associated with COVID at the time, we elected to mob old spring cleanup days in 2020. However, in the previous years, this was a annual event that we tried to make the CND transfer station, CND landfill and transfer station available for free dumping. So as in years past, we do this in stages. And it starts with roll-offs, dumpster roll-offs being placed in the different communities around the county. And so our tentative schedule right now is for the city of Ottawa to have, they will have their free dump days on April 2nd and 3rd. Now, that is just folks bringing their trash and material to the roll-offs. And then, once those are full, the city of Ottawa will have those delivered to the transfer station and emptied free of charge. But we will, you know, if citizens bring material to us on the 2nd and 3rd, we will charge them like we do any other weekend. Would be on April 2nd and 3rd. The communities west of Highway 59, being Pomona, Williamsburg, Princeton and Richmond, roll-offs would be available in those communities April 9th to 10th. And then east of Highway 59, Wellsville, Rantoul and Lane, April 16th or yeah, it should be 16th and 17th, not the 6th and 17th. April 16th and 17th. And then free dumping for all of the public in Franklin County will be held on Friday, April 23rd and Saturday, April 24th. That is the two days that citizens can bring material to our landfill and to our transfer, transfer station free of charge. And so that is the same type of schedule that we've had in years past and it's worked out very well. We have already touched base with several of the communities, give them a heads up. And if you approve this, official letters will go out to each community and they will be notified of the dates and the the various restrictions. We ask that, you know, no tires and household house waste and those sorts of things be, they will not be accepted through this process. But most everything else will. So we would just ask for your permission to move forward with this spring cleanup days and help out those citizens of Franklin County.
It's a very popular thing we do and it gets a lot of trash out of the communities that might not otherwise find their way to the landfill. Any questions, comments? Everybody happy with the way it's gone in the past? Happy with what's in front of us? Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the dates for spring cleanup that are proposed?
I think it's been a very popular event and people look forward to it every year. I think they really collect a lot of trash, bring out, take advantage of that. So I'll make a motion to approve it.
Need a sec.
I'll second it. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Wainwright?
Yes.
All right, staff reports, there.
Thanks, Cole. I told you last week I would try to give you a more detailed description of what transpired at the tax sale. From the outset, I'll say that the sale has not been finalized. We have to file a motion and order with the court confirming the sale. And we're in the process of doing that now, but certainly we anticipate the sale being confirmed. But the total sale proceeds, and this is just from the sale, this isn't what was redeemed prior to the sale. But we're $107,294. Now, I'll back up and say, you know, when I got here, I wasn't intimately familiar with with what the purpose of a tax sale was. And as I looked into it, talked to other counties, what I found was really the benefits of the sale are getting the properties back on the tax rolls. I mean, you kind of go into it assuming that you're going to have to write off some back taxes. And so if you end up with a little revenue from it, then you're ahead. Well, this year it's really been a fairly astonishing success. So the total sale proceeds were, as I said, over $107,000. The fees associated with the sale, so your publication costs, your title fees were about $20,700. Well, that amount will be reimbursed to us from those sale proceeds. So right there, that expense is taken care of. And then we'll have another about $60,000, $60,500, give or take, of back taxes that will just, we will be awarded. And so we're $60,000 ahead at this point. Now, if you look at from when we published notice in the Ottawa Herald of the sale, we had four additional properties that were redeemed for an additional $60,000. So right there, between revenue from the sale itself and just the four properties redeemed in that three-week period, you're at about $120,000. Now, we contract with an attorney to do this sale. It is looking like his fees are going to end up being somewhere in the $20,000 to $25,000 range. So not only did every single property sell, so every property is on the tax rolls. I think when this is said and done, we'll also be over a hundred grand ahead of where we would have been had we not had the sale.
As a community, of course, the redeemed taxes get split up into three, four ways to whoever.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I just want to paint the picture that we have a windfall personally, but yeah.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. But just when you look at using community tax dollars for that and how those dollars come back to us, we're significantly ahead. And so even when we don't see the revenue that we did, and revenue is probably not the right word, but the award from the sale is still beneficial because it gets property back on the rolls. But when you also realize these awards, it's, it's, you know, that's a very good thing for the community. So we will continue to talk every year about whether you want to do these annually. But at this point in time, once we get this order filed, we'll have a pretty clean tax roll. So very good thing. And definitely, and we've talked a lot about COVID over the last year with good reason, but certainly this represents forward progress as a community, just getting that cleaned up. Next thing I want to talk about is community partners. We talked at our retreat at great length about our budget and where we're at. And I said it to you at the retreat, I'm going to say it to you here. Janet and I, we make recommendations. That is our role in the operation. We make recommendations to the five of you. The five of you ultimately have to decide what kind of budget that you want to approve. And as we always talk about, it's the single most important policy decision that you make. As we discussed at the retreat, Janet and I intend on making a budget recommendation that is fairly flat. Our reason for that, you know, in years past, I mean, we, Janet and I typically always recommend a flat budget. In years past, that's been designed to improve our reserve funds because we were in a pretty rough shape when we started doing this. We're in the process of getting our reserve funds. They're certainly in a much better spot. There's still work to be done, but we're getting there. At this juncture, though, it's, it's remaining concerns about COVID. I think that this pandemic is heading in the right direction. I think we're all happy, but I also, we don't think that it's over. We're still waiting to see what happens with some of these variants, but there's still just enough out there that we are just reluctant to get too ambitious with it because we don't know, we still don't know what our ongoing expenses related to this are going to be. I mean, we are likely going to be paying extra help to help us with vaccines for quite some time. And so some of those unknowns are causing us to be pretty conservative. And then you look at what's happening in the Kansas Legislature. There are a lot of bills that are still out there pending that could have a pretty dramatic effect on how we budget. Some may even have an effect on, hopefully not, but a potentially revenue. And so we're, that gives us pause because we still don't know, despite the fact that, you know, we are going to start putting a budget together ASAP, we're still not entirely sure of what rules we're going to have to play by. And for these reasons, in terms of the departments that report to me, the other elected officials, we've all discussed and we're going to stay as flat as we can. Now, that won't include increases per our pay plan or for our benefit costs. But beyond that, you know, looking pretty flat. And so we are inclined to recommend to you that the community partners stay flat as well. But again, that, that's really a decision that the five of you need to make. Now, for additional perspective, when we had CARES Act funds, we set aside a quarter million dollars worth, reached out to every community partner and tried to work with them on giving them CARES Act funds. Some of them, we did, I mean, some of them we were able to help. Some of them tried, but our consultant indicated that they had received far too much or enough already that they couldn't justify receiving additional expenses. And then some, we just, they did not respond to us. So we did try with CARES Act funds. And then we think that we are going to get additional stimulus funds from Biden's relief package. And what I would tell the five of you is, we will once again, provided the rules allow us to, we will reach out to all of our community partners again and see if there's something we can do with those funds. So from an ad valorem perspective, trying to stay flat, but I do think we may have some opportunities to help them, just like we did in 2020. So having said all of that, would welcome any thoughts or discussion you want to have.
One thing you mentioned one time is whether we want to have the representative from each one of those partners come in and do a presentation. For me, I don't think that's necessary. We can receive their proposals and I think, I think if we're going to agree on being pretty flat, I don't think there's any necessity for them to come in and do a presentation. That's just my perspective on it.
Yeah, I think Roy hits on a good point. The question isn't the entities themselves and their mission, or what they're using the dollars for. The question really is, are we, can we comfortably spend much more money, given all the things that are in flux for us? And what our, our position is, so. And I agree that we probably need to stay flat as we are ourselves and within the county, outwards to our community partners.
I had my first Prairie Paws meeting last night, and one of the reasons that their budget is so bad at this point is because of COVID. But I hate to do a big increase this year because of COVID. And then next year, COVID is hopefully over and they'll be back into being able to do what they need to do. And then we've increased their, but if there's an opportunity there to possibly give them funds from COVID to cover some of that, I think that's a, that's a great alternative to be able to help them in the now without putting ourselves out for the future.
No, and I'm glad you mentioned that. And Prairie Paws was one of our community partners that we gave CARES Act funds to. So we did provide them with additional help and they were great to work with through that process, so. And certainly, I want to be very clear, we will have the discussion about community partners and their specific requests. And we will walk through them one by one like we always do. That's not what this is. This is more, do you guys want to bring them in and have them present or have them present over Zoom? Or are you all generally of the opinion that we want to try and keep them flat just like we are? And if we're going to keep them flat, is there a reason to bring them in? That's really the discussion I would like to have today.
Well, I do know, again, she, the, so Prairie Paws has a new administrator and she had said something about she'd like to, and I said, you know, we were still discussing that, whether we should do that. But Prairie Paws used to come in once a quarter and kind of give us an update. And I said, because now we're meeting in person, maybe not, not to discuss their request, but to just give us an update of what they do and of their operations and where they're at. And that might be an alternative for some of them just to come in.
Don, what are your thoughts?
I kind of, you know, I've been the community partner now, but I understand, I can see both sides of the coin here. And so, and I hope a year from now, we're all back to more of a normal situation and we can kind of, I think it's hard, it's so hard for us to perceive what, what's going to condition will be in, in the next six months to a year. We could be right back in the whole bad situation again, we don't know that yet. So I know, I know it is with the funding and all, but I do believe we're trying to keep our people and things flat. So I have no problem with us having to stick to those guns. At least until we can get through this thing and see what, I mean, I know how important it is that they need more funding because things keep costing more, that's the way it is. But it's costing us more too, so. And I'm hoping that a year from now, we can, we can have a whole change of atmosphere. Until then, try and hold everything flat.
See, I was leaning the same direction. I'd be like the comment, kind of like I am made, you know, using cyclical costs, paid, even paying that with cyclical funding that comes from the federal government. Stimulus actually get worn off, you know, so that, that makes sense, keep tax-based revenue good for budgeting, so.
And I appreciate the feedback. Couple of things, and Don, you touched on it. I know at the staff level, we completely agree in terms of, we hope that next year, when we're having these discussions, that it's just an entirely different dynamic. I mean, certainly, we're anxious to continue evolving as an organization and being able to tackle more of the things that we have deemed as priorities. And COVID has just completely sidetracked some of that. And we're starting to come out of it. And just what you've had on your agenda today represents forward progress. It hopefully is the beginning of an emergence from this pandemic. But yeah, I, I think that certainly realize our community partners are in the same position. And I do hope that a year from now, we are able to indulge them on some of the things that, some of the ways they would like to grow as well. So I completely agree. One more item on this. We talked at the retreat about Willow Domestic Bi- One more item on this, we talked at the retreat about Willow Domestic Violence Center. They've reached out and asked if, you know, how they could become a community partner, and I want to have that discussion. They are also a group that I can reach out to and try to help with stimulus dollars. But, you know, I do want to have the discussion about whether or not there's any desire in terms of adding them to our community partners list. So, any feedback on that would be appreciated.
Well, the question I would have is, the question is, what's the connection between the Willow Center and the Willows in Lawrence? I don't know if they're one of the same.
This is, it is, the Willow here is the Willow in Lawrence. We don't have a organization that can do what they do here in Franklin County. So, when we have ladies in Franklin County who need that assistance, they do use the Lawrence Willow, so. And they do, and they are, and I know at retreat, I had said, I was holding off till I talked to my husband, who works with Willow in the jail, and he definitely felt that they would be a good partner for us to support. And there are definitely ladies that he knows of, that they are currently, from Franklin County, that they're currently working with, so it is definitely a service that we are using.
Well, the reservation, it's definitely not the, what the organization does, or the way it's run, their mission, any of that. Redeeming things, like that could be said about a lot of civic groups within any town. What is the policy? What's the trigger point? What, at what point do we find it necessary? Is it appropriate to support them with tax dollars? And again, it's not anything, this group specifically, I guess also, this is a permanent decision. We won't give money to them this year, and then decide next year, we don't want to give money to them. I mean, if it's so, you know, compelling to do this year, it's an ongoing cost for forever, which is fine, if that's the decision we want to make. I think just we're setting the precedent. I think it'd be good to step back and, you know, make sure we know, or tell ourselves or the community, that dollars were responsible for. What is the reason we do for some, not the other? And where's that line, and why? With any civic group, individual, I mean, donations are a significant part of their income as well, so at what point are we donating on the public's behalf? Again, not, I think it's a wonderful organization.
I think I missed it maybe before, but I feel like we could add them to our list, but we just need to tell them that that's, it's probably not going to happen this year with the Thirteenth Panther, their name goes on the list, and I mean, they're one of the ones that'll be considered the next time around, and see if things are how they are. I mean, and I mean, not in a wrong or white way, but at least to let them know, we feel that they deserve a spot on the list, but this is just not a year that we're going to be able to fulfill it dollar-wise, and but we'll thoroughly consider it when we get it through our next budget, and see how things are.
Commissioner Harris, do you have any thoughts on this?
I don't.
Okay. Well, I'm always reluctant to speak for the board, but what I am, I think I'm hearing is, at least for this year, a general reluctance, but that we should reassess when we're looking at the 2023 budget. There is so much in flux with this next stimulus package, but depending on the language of it, and, you know, feedback from our consultant, is there any objection to, again, if it's allowed within the stimulus, any objection to reaching out to them for potential assistance with stimulus funds?
I think that's the point about putting them on the list. Just because it doesn't, then, then we can tell our people that are overseeing it, that these people are on our list. It don't have to say they have a dollar amount going to them, but at least they're on our list, they're community partners, and could they be considered for any fund?
Okay. Any other feedback from commissioners on this?
I would agree with Don. If we're not going to give them our money now, yeah, to be able to give them stimulus money would be the greatest.
Okay. All right. Very good. I think I am ready to turn this over to Casey.
No word of COVID, that's awesome.
Well, I, I know.
I mean, that's great. You don't have to use that word in your comments.
Some of that is intentional, like I'm trying to take the next step as an organization, so yeah. But Casey, do you want to come up here?
Good morning, commissioners. So, I will give you a quick vaccine update, so a little bit of COVID. We have administered a total of 6,035 doses. 3,900 of those are Moderna first doses, 1,970 of those are Moderna second doses, and then 145 of those are Johnson &amp; Johnson. I didn't put what our total number, but we have fully vaccinated over 2,000 people in the community, because it takes two doses of the Moderna. I know the Health Department will be administering another 100 first doses today, and then 330 total second doses between today and Saturday. And if you, I think Derek mentioned that Governor Kelly made an announcement on Monday that we're going to move the entire state of Kansas into Phases Three and Four, beginning next Monday, March 22nd. So Franklin County is still finishing up Phase Two. We have a few that will carry over into next week. But we have talked with our vaccine group, and Dr. Ransom, and our priorities for Three and Four, which, to give you a little perspective, Phase Three says, people ages 16 to 64 with serious medical conditions. And then Phase Four is ages 16 to 64 with other medical concerns. And now they're all grouped into one group. So, anybody that has any sort of medical, underlying medical concern, and who are we to judge what is the highest priority as far as medical concerns go? So, all of those people will be prioritized together, and we'll literally just work down our list like we had before by age. So, we'll start at 64 and work down our list by age for Phases Three and Four. Like I said, there's still some Phase Two people that will fall next week, and then also, anybody from Phase One or Phase Two that calls in to get on the list will just be moved to the top of the list, and they'll get an appointment right away. Any questions on any of that?
Do those phases also include people that work in businesses that are essential businesses?
So, they say congregate settings, or businesses that have a lot of interaction with customers? I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a list that says essential businesses, but I know there are several businesses that have given their employees letters saying they need to get the vaccine, and they bring those to us. So, every business in some way is essential.
And I would add that I think for Governor Kelly to make this announcement, she must know that the state is about to get a massive shipment of doses. If you pay close attention to this, you'll see like Pfizer, for example, which I know isn't what we're getting, but they have announced that they are now producing, I mean, an enormous amount of vaccines. I think, and we won't know until we know, but I think that our supply is going to outpace our demand quicker than we realize. You know, we've all stressed about this, kind of as a COVID team, like how do we prioritize? But I think we're closer than we realize to just getting so much of this, that basically anyone who wants one will be able to get in and get it. So, fingers crossed, that's what's happening, and I think, you know, I think it's going to, so.
Walmart, is Walmart being able, are they doing it yet? Are they, any of our pharmacies, are they?
So, I would have to defer to Nick on that. I'm not 100% sure that the pharmacies have received any doses yet. I know that they are all prepared to receive doses, but I think we did, we did vaccinate several of Walmart's staff, because at the time that we started working on those employees in that phase, that they didn't have access to the vaccine.
I thought I heard something on the radio that said Kramer's was giving shots.
I know that Kramer's has a list going. I don't know if they've received the vaccine or not.
I thought they said they had hundreds, but.
If they do, then they're probably.
That's what I heard, don't mean to do.
Yeah. Any other questions? So, I do want to also state on a public meeting that if people have a vaccine appointment, that if they're not going to make it, then they need to call us, because it does create a scheduling nightmare. And I think a lot of people just don't realize that the Moderna comes in 10 doses in one vial, and we only have six hours to distribute all 10 of those doses. And Johnson &amp; Johnson comes in five dose vials, so same thing, we only have six hours. And we have people waiting, so we can get somebody in there to take that dose if they don't show up, but it also is complicated. So, if they can just give us a heads up that they're not coming, that will make things a lot easier.
And I think we're seeing, as we transition into younger aged people, we're starting to see more and more no-shows. And we've always had a secondary list, but what we've decided to do in light of the governor's announcement is, our secondary list will be prioritized based on how long you have been on our list. So, if you called us, you know, six months ago and got on our list, and you are now top priority, the second we get a cancellation or a no-show, we're going to call you. And so, irregardless of your age, so our backup list is folks who have been on our normal list the longest, if that makes sense. And we feel like that's, that's a good way to prioritize, or to kind of balance age with the people that have been signed up the longest, so.
Okay, the next, I have one more thing that doesn't have to do with COVID. So, I know all of the commissioners are here now, and we updated that acrylic piece in the midst of COVID. And now that the wall is nice and fresh, and a flat wall, and doesn't have these lines in it, I don't know, skin coated, thank you. The piece is maybe a little bit smaller than we, we think it could be, because we were trying to fit it between those lines to begin with. So, the thought is that we would move this piece into the Suite Two wall behind Amy's desk, and then order a bigger piece. However, the bigger piece is a little bit more costly, because we have to use a thicker acrylic. So, if we do a bigger piece, it'll be about double the size of that. It's going to cost $2,495. We just want to get commission approval before we did something like that.
And this isn't as much a recommendation as it is just a request for feedback. If you all are happy with that, think it's content, we don't need to do this, we just, we have a wall behind Amy there, and administration that needs something, we think that piece would look good there. And now that we have, the slats, or whatever you call them, are gone, certainly we could put a much larger piece. But if that's not, you know, what you would like to see done right now, we completely understand, but there's money within the budget to do that as well.
I think that's fine. You okay with that?
I think anything would maybe be out of, I like that, just like that.
Okay. Yeah, no, very good. We keep that.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, Nick, are you on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, go ahead.
Just to touch base on Walmart and Walgreens, both of them are expected to get doses. Walmart's corporate has switched them around, so I believe they're still looking at Pfizer around the first of April. Talking to Walgreens, they should get doses around the first of April as well. Auburn Pharmacy up at Wellsville has got doses, and so has Kramer. I've had a conversation with Kramer, they're, they're working hard to make sure they kind of follow where they're at, so I'm sure they'll move into Phase Three along with us, so they've been able to work with there. A whole lot more to talk about. We are planning to do 200 doses on Saturday. Once those doses are done, we're hopeful that this will unmarried us from the Saturday that we previously had, just so we are prepared if we do get larger allocations of the COVID vaccine. We have started doing a few home, home vaccines. We did three last week, actually four last week. We have a total of, I think, four more on the list that we're going to get this week, so we should have our homebound people vaccinated that we know about by the end of this week. Other than that, I really don't have a lot on COVID. We did just finish working with FirstNet in the state of Kansas on a, on a trial for the, dispatch resources from other locations, and that was successful, so that's really all I have.
When the pharmacies start giving shots, will they be included on our count, or are we going to really not know how many people are vaccinated in this county?
We'll be at the mercy of them giving us numbers. I think for most of them, we can probably get some numbers from them, but we'll be only able to really report what we vaccinated. Like Casey's number she gave, he doesn't really include the nursing homes and other places like that. And we asked and got small amounts of numbers from them, but that's kind of the hard part, is when they start giving vaccines to other places, we may not be able to accurately track that.
Our allocation, is it increasing, holding steady? Are you seeing more come from the state? The number of vaccines we're receiving, Nick?
I'm having trouble hearing you, Cole.
The number of vaccines we're receiving from the state, do you see that number holding steady, increasing?
We're hopeful it goes up. Right now, we're averaging 400. Last week, we ended up getting 500. There's a lot of talk that we should get a larger allocation at the end of the month. So, right now, we're just in a holding period, planning for 400, but knowing that if we do get more, we'll have the ability to push a lot out. So, it's been since the beginning, we keep hoping for more, and getting right around the 400.
Are you planning another Saturday clinic, then, or?
We will plan another Saturday clinic, once we see how many doses we have. Right now, we can effectively push 500 doses out a week, just pretty weekly. So, we're hopeful that we get to doses, and we can do a big Saturday clinic. The kind of staff that's excited to do them, we just got to get, we just got to get the doses to do it.
To answer Ian's question, we did have a discussion with the hospital yesterday, and I know they gave right around, or maybe a little over 400 total doses, so that adds on to ours. And then some of the nursing homes have reported, like, you know, each of them are around 100 doses. So, we don't have a final number, but I can try to get as accurate as possible and bring that next week.
Anything else to update, Nick?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, who else on, Brandon Sands, we were going to come back to Brandon, are you still on?
Yes, lady, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. I think you're going to update us on District Corridor HSC project.
Yes, sir. I am very excited to be able to report finally that that project has started. It started the 11th, Thursday last week. They started on the west end of the building, in that mechanical room. As of today, the old air handling unit that was in the basement, and the condensing unit outside have both been removed and all the way, and they started bringing in the new unit and getting those set up. And they're planning, at the most, probably two to three weeks to finish that end of the building, and then they'll go over to the east end and get that one knocked out.
That's great. That's great.
Brandon, um, I know we've talked about the striping in the annex lot and how we had just had that done, but it's already, um, uh, it's just in pretty poor shape. What is your intention in terms of fixing that situation?
Yeah, um, so we, um, located a striping machine, um, that was in a storage. Um, we got that out, oh, what was it, a couple of weeks ago, maybe? Those days, we had a couple of nice days. Um, we, we broke that thing out and, and tried it out, um, just to get ourselves familiar with it, and, uh, works great. So we, uh, I've already ordered, um, or purchased the parking lot paint, um, to do the annex lot, and so we're planning to, uh, to do that ourselves. Um, it's already been swept, um, uh, and all the, uh, rocks cleaned up from the winter, so that's, um, that's all ready to go. So as soon as we start getting some nice, um, some nicer days, we're going to tackle that and get those painted with a, hopefully a better product than was put down initially.
Hey, and then, um, we need to, this will be a conversation involving our Public Health Officer, Dr. Ransom, but as soon as he feels it's safe to do so, I would also like to schedule a facilities tour for all of the commissioners. So we haven't done that in a couple of years. We have Commissioner Harris, who's new, so that we can walk through the facilities. You can identify additional maintenance needs. And then with the historic courthouse, uh, and we've talked about this, Brandon, so this shouldn't be a surprise to you, but wa- walking through, trying to figure out, maybe see if we can find some low hanging fruit that maybe we can restore to just continue to, for lack of a better way of saying it, restore the integrity of the old courthouse. Any questions for Brandon?
Appreciate you hanging on the phone there.
Thank you.
All right. David Lee, how much work?
Yes, Commissioners, uh, this morning, I wanted to give you a quick project update, uh, things that, uh, we've got consultants in and whatnot working on. Uh, we've, we've already talked about the, um, uh, Homics asphalt project, um, but I'm last, well, on Monday, I met with our bridge engineers, Cook Flat and Struggle, um, to discuss several of the projects, including the Osborne Terrace project. But, uh, um, I wanted to get kind of updates on some of the things that they had already had in their queue and to talk about some of the things that are upcoming. So, um, the biannual bridge inspections should be getting underway here soon, uh, and then next week or so, they'll be coming by and picking up all of our bridge records so that they can prepare the files for the field. And then, uh, field work is expected to get started, at least at this point, in late April or early May, sometime in, in that timeframe. Uh, the KDOT project on Virginia Road, uh, is still on track to be included in the April letting. That should let on, I believe it's the third Tuesday of the month. Um, this is a 30-day project, um, so if they let it in April, take about a month to work through the contract, so they should be ready to start, uh, in late May, early June. Uh, but once, uh, once that letting has occurred and we have an opportunity to find out who the contractor is going to be, I'll reach out and, and, uh, to them and get a firmer schedule. Cook Flat is going to be doing the inspection on that. And we're also planning to, uh, just for the community of Lane, we're planning to keep one lane of traffic open during that 30-day project. So, uh, uh, we all know what an inconvenience it is when railroad track work occurs or some other problem with, uh, uh, Virginia Road out of lane. There's not a whole lot of, um, uh, alternate routes, uh, for the folks in that part of the county to take to, uh, to go north. So we will have a traffic light up that will allow, uh, continuous traffic, uh, throughout the project. Excuse me. Getting back to the Osborne Terrace project, uh, CFS will be in that project immediately, and we'll, we will, staff will work closely with them to, uh, help make sure that this project, uh, meets this October, uh, 2022 deadline. It seems like a long ways away, but, uh, between the, uh, survey and the design, um, and the, the possible right-of-way acquisition and the possible, uh, utility locates, uh, we really, we have zero time to waste. So, uh, that's one of the things I spoke with, uh, CFS about on Monday, and they assured me that they had, um, uh, staff and personnel, uh, ready to go on that. In fact, uh, we talked about some of the particulars of the project while I was there, so they are ready to go. Uh, while I was there, I also asked them to prepare a proposal and a construction estimate to repair, uh, the bridge deck on Jackson Road Bridge. Uh, that's, that deck has been a problem, uh, for quite some time. Uh, our staff, we continue to patch the, uh, the concrete puddles that, that developed. Our, um, our ability to keep up with those is, is, uh, fairly limited. And with the, uh, the movement of the bridge, that, um, you know, our, our puddle patching is not, uh, a long-term solution. So what I've asked them to do is to prepare a proposal for us to, uh, create a project that is, uh, almost exactly like the Colorado Bridge project that we did last year. Ultimately, we will have a contractor that will, uh, ship out, uh, the, the puddles to expose the, uh, the rebar in, in the areas that, uh, that we're experiencing these, these spalling and other problems with the deck. They'll chip that out, uh, they will patch that, and then once the, uh, once they've got all the holes patched, we will come back over that with that, uh, high-strength, low-permeability, uh, concrete, it's about an inch and a half thick, uh, that we will place on the entire bridge deck. That should buy us another 10-plus years and make that a much, much, uh, better situation for the traveling public. Uh, there's other things that need to occur with that bridge, but they are not immediate concerns. The bridge deck is an immediate concern. So as soon as I get that proposal and have, have had a chance to review it, I'll be bringing it, bringing it before you all for approval. Hopefully, um, uh, the, the terms of that proposal are, uh, within our budget and, uh, that we're able to move forward with that, um, here in the next month or so. Uh, so that, that'll be coming up. Uh, I have also been in touch with SCS engineers, though they are the folks that have been helping us with our landfill and transfer station for years. Uh, they are planning at this point, and I need to, uh, work with Derek to confirm this, but we're planning for, at least at this point, an April 5th study session so that they can present their, uh, uh, landfill expansion report. Um, I've asked them to, uh, walk through that report and then with a, with an emphasis on, um, uh, describing the KDHG permanent process, um, construction timelines, and ultimately, uh, the landfill closure process so that you have a, an understanding of the things that, um, not only of, uh, what we've done in the last year, but you'll also have a better understanding of the steps that we need to take moving forward. Uh, they'll have a PowerPoint presentation that they've showed during this, um, study session, uh, and they'll allow plenty of time for questions and, and that sort of thing. They'll have three members of their team involved in the presentation, including Floyd Cotter. Floyd, uh, I think some of you may, may know Floyd is the Vice President with SCS, uh, and Floyd has been involved with our landfill operation for, uh, well over 20 years now as a lead consultant, uh, and he's still involved with this. And, and on a side note, uh, Floyd is a former Franklin County resident, so he is very familiar with, uh, Franklin County and our landfill operations. So it's, it's, uh, great to have him part of the team. Uh, so that is kind of what we're, uh, dealing with right at the moment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
David, have you had any flooding issues, uh, over the county?
I have not, um, I am not actually in town, so I have not checked in with staff. Uh, I did, uh, see an email where they, um, uh, had folks out, uh, taking care of flood flip signs, so I would imagine that, uh, yes, there was some, some minor flooding, uh, but our folks are monitoring the conditions and, and acting appropriately.
Questions for David? Appreciate you dialing in, David. Move on to Commissioners' comments, uh, oh, Janet? Commissioners' comments and board reports, Don?
The only thing I kind of did go to Wellsville, yeah, and, uh, the manager wanted to break a comment to us, he's very appreciative of the operations of the COVID-19 virus, uh, pandemic and the vaccines, and, uh, they're all pretty happy with the way it's all been run. Uh, they are, did a lot of talk about extension of sewer lines up there for more future businesses and so forth. Uh, they did, uh, have a problem finding a pool, a pool manager this year, they finally contacted someone, uh, and their, their police department was awarded the AAA award again this year. I see where Ottawa was also, so that's a pretty good deal, so that's, that's all I have.
Um, last Wednesday, we had our meeting with, um, the, the District Four Judicial District, um, in appointing the new judge in Osage County. They have three, um, nominations, and we were meeting and interviewing them in person on April 6th. And the City of Ottawa had their study session on Monday. They are moving ahead with their refinancing. They did do their, uh, rating, and they, and they actually got upgraded. Their rating got upgraded, so they get a little bit better interest rate, and also the interest rates went down just a little bit, so they are going to, not as much as they initially had hoped, but, uh, more than the last time that they had discussed it. So they are moving ahead. I think by today, they actually will have, uh, the results of the, the bond. And, um, they spent a lot of discussion time on capital improvements and kind of what projects they really want to prioritize. Because of their financial situation, that some of those projects had not been done in the last couple of years, so of course they just pile up. But they discussed a lot of different ones, including, um, relocating or building a new fire station, uh, south of 14th, 14th Street because of the addition of Industrial Park, that they feel like that that's going to be a necessity, uh, in the near future, especially when that starts. And I know Paul's here, I don't know if he has anything to share with us, but, um, and then, um, the last thing was the city manager to discuss in his comments about the tax sale and like the coves and the, and the mechanism that they have in place to be able to remove those, um, specials on there, not just with the coves, but any other properties that has issues like that, so that they can move those properties back onto the, um, into the tax base, because there are a lot of builders at this point that are interested in those properties as soon as they become available. So, um, that is all I have for today. Oh, I had Paul's last night, um, and one of their things, their, on their agenda was our, the Franklin County Community Partner Funding Request, so there was a lot of questions directed at me, uh, about that, but, and then also, they do have a new, um, a newer, and I had not met her yet, um, administrator out there, and she feels like, it seems like she has, she really is trying to reduce expenses out there, keeping the, the animals for a shorter amount of time, um, doing what they can to reduce expenses. They've had a problem with their heating and air conditioning system, um, and it turns out that there's a problem, there was a problem with the computer, uh, reading the information right, and so when they got that fixed, they were told that their, um, utility expenses could be substantially less. And even through that cold, uh, spell, she's already feeling that there's a, been a difference in it. Um, and then they have a problem with the lagoon, where she is tackling problems head on, um, so I feel like she is probably a good asset to the organization. And now I'm done.
All right, Roy?
Yeah, I got a letter a while about, we're not too far along, about from, uh, Wellsville Historical Society, and, uh, they're making progress on the old bank building up there, and, uh, we'll have another, uh, museum in the county, uh, fairly soon, and, and I don't know, I might want to mention.
Yeah, I, I do have that letter. I'll make copies of it so everybody can see it. They were sent down by them, and I forgot about that. Sorry, thank you, Roy. They're coming along, it's an old building across the city, all they've talked about destroying several times, and now they've completely restored it and redoing it for a little new lake center, uh, museum. And I have a copy of that letter, and I'll bring pictures in and give them to everybody. Thank you, Roy.
Okay. Yeah, yesterday morning, I went to the area agency on aging, and, uh, uh, they're making good progress on our new, uh, delivery van garage out there at, uh, North Industrial Park. Uh, they should have that ready fairly soon. They'll be able to, uh, uh, load their delivery vans, uh, inside now, and be a lot better situation there. They have received, uh, uh, quite a bit of help from the car racks and other, other government stuff, and, uh, getting all their vehicles up, up to good running condition and that sort of thing. And one thing I didn't know, uh, once, once they prepare a meal, they gotta, they gotta have it delivered within four hours. And they usually try to get going at nine o'clock and get all the meals, uh, on wheels delivered by no later than one o'clock in that timeframe. They did talk a little bit about opening up, uh, their nutrition sites, uh, various locations and, and, uh, those nutrition sites are open, but they're doing individual meals, and that's talking about going back to bulk meals and, and, uh, protocol for doing, uh, like cafeteria type of, uh, serving, and, and I don't think they're quite ready to do that yet. I think they're going to still do individual, uh, meals at these nutrition sites. And then, uh, with this new building just done, they're looking at their parking lot and trying to get it, uh, repaired out there, so, uh, that's about, uh, all I have.
We have a meeting today, Zoom meeting at lunch for city, county, school, district. Just a reminder. Paul, did you have anything you wanted? Okay, didn't really go skip over you. Anyone else, anything need to say before we look to your, your study session, and maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in touch with, with Colt here before week's end, but yeah, we'll try to have a study session Monday, so.
All right. I think this worked out okay for us, but I don't know about people calling in.
Yeah.
That sort of thing might have been a little difficult.
Yeah, I'll talk. It's worked out, just like we did our Zoom calls originally, so.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
All right. Need a motion to adjourn? Your second?
Second.
All in favor? All right?
Hi.
You posed, we're adjourned.
Thank you.